We should know plenty of time when funerals don't happen.
Happen all the time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the appointed hour of 7:00. Welcome to the Thursday, August 5th edition of the Lexington City Council meeting. Hard to believe it's August, but thank you all for being here and thank you to Libra and Downing for hosting us still. I call the meeting to order and I'll remind members of council with the microphones, I think we're queued up now so that multiple people can activate and it'll kick over, but please be sure to speak loud and proud so folks in the audience can hear and folks that may be listening because we're not projecting Facebook Live or visually recording this at this point. But if I could ask you all to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you all very much. Next item is consideration of the agenda. Are there any items to be added, modified, or otherwise? Mr. Ziegler?
I have one question about an item on the consent agenda. I don't need to pull it off, but I wanted to ask a question about it. Is that okay when we get to that, or do you want me to pull it off the consent?
What is your question?
I just would like to acknowledge that we're having a parade during WNL Parents Weekend and we typically try not to close streets. And I was going to ask a question if we notified the business owners that we were going to have a rolling street closure on a Saturday afternoon of Parents Weekend.
I would say to, procedurally, if we want to address that question, should we pull it off?
Yeah, sure.
Good. We will pull the item of the parade, I'm out there, 9.1. The WNL Street Closure you want to take off as well?
Yes, to talk.
To talk about, okay. We will then, unless there's an objection, we will have no consent agenda, but we'll have those two items. I'll actually just move them to new business on the backside there. Is that satisfactory? With removal of the consent agenda and adding items 9.1 and 9.2 to be 15.2 and 15.3, is there an objection to approving the agenda in that fashion? Hearing none, we'll approve the agenda with those modifications. Next item is consideration of the minutes from the previous meeting, July 15. Those were there for your taking. Are there any changes or observations on those? Hearing none, we will accept those, approve those as presented. Next, we'll move into citizens' remarks and comments. Is there anyone here who would like to address city council this evening? No one signed up and no member of the public raising their hand or wishing to speak. Next item is unfinished business, 10.1, petition to change New Market Place to Evergreen Place. That was on our agenda previously with a public hearing and there were a couple of people that spoke, but would offer this for council's consideration this evening.
I move that we adopt the petition to change New Market Place to Evergreen Place.
Second? In the motion, would recommend, or would ask if you intend to waive the $400 fee to acknowledge that.
Sorry, and waive the $400 filing fee for the petition.
And second, very good. Is that satisfactory for all parties? Any discussion?
I have a quick question, I guess, for the city manager. Mr. Knox would like to know, like, when this goes into effect so that he can start, you know, doing his change of, all the things that he needs to do. So, do you have some sense of how long this will be, would take to be an official changeover?
When we say official, I mean, I think the, you know, it's official when you make this decision.
Okay.
Changing the street signs and things of that nature, assuming there are no shortage of street signs, shouldn't only be a matter of weeks.
Okay.
And then we don't need to do anything more administratively. We've checked with all the agencies out there, so.
Okay, so it's your understanding that regardless of what the street sign says now, he can change his checks and all the other things that he needs to do and the post office will actually send mail to his new address?
Once, you know, we have to notify them, but that's a very short period of time for notification.
Okay, okay.
We actually notify the post office.
Okay, so I guess when you do that, if you could notify Mr. Knox of that step, that would be great. Thank you.
Happy to do it.
Part and parcel with the process of changing and figuring out, and this being the first case for our process. Great, great question and certainly Mr. Knox working with staff to go through that process to ensure the water bill makes it there in a timely manner to keep his water turned on. Any other discussion?
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the policy or the procedure, but just something technical, just as a reminder to the city engineer, that, you know, when he's making the changes with VDOT, that he also contacts Google or any of the mapping companies because that takes some time for them to upload that information, so the sooner the better. And I would kind of be concerned about if there are any funerals at Evergreen and people are coming from out of town, if they don't know the cemetery, they're going to be seeing it as New Market. So maybe we can contact the local funeral home to let them know that when they send out information to the families about plans, that they remind them of the street name change, just temporarily until it's all in place.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. If there's no other comments or questions, I'd ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much and good luck, staff, with the process. Hope that all goes smoothly. Next item is consideration of a cigarette tax. And I'll call on city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been through some of this before and we all know the history, I believe, of why we are considering the cigarette tax now. The counties have recently been given the authority to put such a tax in place. We've not had one here in Lexington. Regionally, we've had conversations at the Board of Supervisors meeting here at city council meeting over in Buena Vista about should we put in place, if you will, in our region a cigarette tax that we basically share, if you will, that we put it in place and each of us has it in effect. A number of concerns have been voiced about who should go first, should it be the county, should it be the city? Concerns from a number of parties about taxes. Nobody likes taxes, whatever the form they might fall in. But I'd like to say that I believe if you look at the revenue stream that could be developed there and the purposes we have to use it for, it would seem that we, in too few cases, have enough money to put into parks and recreation. And parks and recreation are very positive pursuit, are parks, are recreational facilities for our young people and in our entire community. And so I would say that based on what I see from the budget, the few months I've been here, but even looking at past budgets, we're not going to have the funding that we'd like to invest in our parks. It's just not going to be there. There are too many other competing demands and needs out there and we have the opportunity now to use this very wisely, if council should approve it, to put into something like parks and recreational facilities that benefit the health and the well-being of our community. And while we're not responsible for the decisions that others make, at the same time, we can allow people to have other options, especially younger people, who sometimes need that type of activity, need pursuits that are positive, or else they're more likely to perhaps exercise or find their way into decisions that aren't as positive. So I would say that that would be something I would highly recommend, council consider, once this tax is approved. And I would actually ask, of course, that you do approve this tax. I think it's a good opportunity for us to take advantage of a revenue stream that currently is not there. And if we want to address this, we're going to have to, you know, find parks, that is. If we're not want to address parks, we're going to have to find the revenue somewhere else. So I guess that's what I would add at this point in time. Staff has discussed it with the Commissioner of Revenue, Karen Roundy, myself and her and other staff members. She can take care of this tax without any undue stress on her office, the administration and management of it. So that's my recommendation and briefing to city council that if not tonight, very soon, you approve this tax.
Thanks, Jim. Heard the city manager's recommendation. Mr. Alligood?
What kind of revenue stream are we talking about?
We can't calculate that. Estimates are about as good as we have. There are, as far as I know, no data that shows what the cigarette sales are, the volumes, in any particular retail outlet or even for our community. So just based on what we've seen, Jake Adams, our previous finance director, looked at some other communities similar size that had the tax in place, and I think he was thinking around $60,000 to $70,000 annually, but no idea.
Did you say 60,000 to 70,000, or six to seven?
60,000 to 70,000, yes, sir.
And for the city, or?
For the city, yes, sir.
Do you recall which city that was? Just for clarification.
No, we looked at several cities, but I can't recall what that was. You know, just the database that was there.
Sure.
Were very different, every community's different, whether it's Salem or Bedford or, you know.
Right. I just want to make sure, not the city of Lexington, but the comparative that Jake located with 60,000 to 70,000 in tax revenue. I would ask for council's consideration. You've heard the recommendation from the city manager.
I would like to add that if this is approved tonight or in the future, that because Rockbridge County has not made a decision yet, that if we do make a motion to approve this at some point, that we will add to that motion that we would consider rescinding our decision if Rockbridge County does not approve it. Because if the jurisdictions are not going to come together to approve it, it's not going to be much of any benefit because people will go outside of the jurisdiction that is taxed to get their cigarettes.
What about something along the lines, something along the lines of not approving the tax, but tabling it until, follow the lead of Rockbridge County with what they do before taking action to, I'd rather follow their footsteps on this issue and not be the leader. So I don't know if you want to put in language the motion to follow their lead and implement the tax upon their approval of tax or just however you want to word it. That's my thought.
It's a thought, but not a motion.
Correct.
Very good.
First off, I want to thank Jim and his staff for all the work they put into this policy. I think it's a very good idea and I'm very supportive of this in theory. As Chuck mentioned, we need to move in lockstep with Rockbridge County if we're going to do this. And I would prefer to express our, publicly express our support for this idea, but maybe not vote on this tonight and table it.
I'll check with the city attorney, but I think you do have the option that you could make a motion to approve it and subject to approval by Rockbridge County. Is that?
The one issue I see with that is the amount of the tax and the date it begins. My guess is that the county is probably still considering between 25 cents and 30 cents. You know, there's no definite on that. There's also no definite on, most likely no definite on when they are to do this. And I'm concerned that the date we have chosen may be too soon and that January would be the date. So I feel like we may have to tinker with this a great deal anyway, and I think it would be better and cleaner just perhaps to wait and take this up at a later date. That's my whole point. If I, to be honest with you, if I believe this would make it more likely that the county passed this tax, I would wholeheartedly vote for this tonight, but I don't believe that's the case. So I think they're going to do what they're going to do without us. So for that reason, I would rather express our support publicly and delay the vote.
Dennis, do you have any indication that they are waiting for us to take the lead?
I really couldn't speak to that. I, you know, I don't know that, but my guess would be that the county is going to do what they're going to do and are probably more concerned with Augusta County and what Augusta County does than what we do. For the same reason that they, you know, if they are moving forward with this, they're doing it without Buena Vista, and I would suspect that they consider us of the same piece as Buena Vista. That's, you know, that's my guess.
I've heard no motion in light of the comments of Mr. Ayers, unless there's any other conversation. Ms. Strong?
I'll ask a question of the city manager because I would only support this tax to level the playing field for the county if they move forward with it. I don't particularly think it's a good tax. I think we're taxing, we're unfairly, or we're placing the burden on people who can least afford it. It does impact lower socioeconomic people. Study shows that disproportionately. And so if we're, first of all, I don't know that we're in need of any new tax this year or until we do our next budget, but if we are, I think there's other taxes we as a city could look at, such as meals tax and rely on, you know, continue on the property tax. So my only reason for moving forward with this would be to level the playing field with the county if they feel like they have to do this. But have we looked at other taxes, at other ways to raise revenue? Are we that in need of raising revenue or are we only doing this because to help the county out?
Clearly, you're correct. We could look at other revenue streams. My inclination, perhaps, or understanding is that city council prefers not to raise those taxes because, you know, there's no end of needs. Once you start down that road for issue X, you can go there for issue Y, too. So I was just looking at the new tax source, understanding that even if we were to raise the real estate tax a penny or the meals tax, we still wouldn't pay for what we needed. And why not take advantage of another tax that's out there, new revenue stream that the county was discussing, is discussing, using as well? Keeping us the same in the area and using what's put before us.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else for members of council? If not, we will have no consideration of the cigarette tax and the city manager may bring that forward if you, if Rockbridge County takes action. I'm understanding if Rockbridge County takes action of approval of a cigarette tax, you all would welcome the city manager bringing that back. Excellent.
So we have that consensus? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that what you're suggesting?
I hear no one opposing that. If you want to call that a consensus, yeah.
Silence gives consent.
Yes, it does. Last chance? Very good. Next item is 10.3, update on Spotswood Development Project.
Not a significant amount of change. We are still waiting on the survey. I've talked to the surveyor, Mr. Trout, and he expects to have some information preliminaries to meet next week. I have talked to several of the other parties. They are not actively working on this now. They'd like to see the survey as well, to see what actually exists on the parcel, if you will, or how much property they're working with. They've all got other projects they're working on very busily, so as soon as they get that information, most of them indicate they'd be happy and be very pleased to work on this and provide us with a proposal. So that's where we are.
Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Alligood?
In terms of the survey and the legal work for that property, the legal work is not proceeding until the survey is completed and submitted and, hold on, the survey, it's been some time since the request has been made to get a survey. What's your sense of the holdup on having a survey? Is it scheduling work? Are they so busy that they just can't get to it?
Initially, they were very, well, they are very busy. Yes, they could not react and move forward with it as soon as we requested. Recently, I believe there may have been some health issues with some of the staff.
To support that, I had some light work done at my place and it was six months before someone could come in and just nail some pins into the ground, so it's real.
Yeah, I second that, that it's just busy from the surveyor. I mean, we've run into that in a lot of different cases, that he's just backed up. And I believe, in conversations with Randy, he's trying to work this in sort of ahead based on Jim sort of urging and sort of importance to the city. So he is doing all he can to work this in on top of stuff that he had previously had scheduled for this sort of chunk of time. So I think that's going as fast as we can reasonably hope it will. We also have a title report out to the title examiner that we have been told we would get back the first week in August, so still have tomorrow to get it, but hopefully, if not tomorrow, first part of next week, we'll have a title report on the property and then we'll just be waiting on the actual survey.
So the survey is holding it up. If all the other things are correct, the survey is now going to be the last piece of the puzzle to go in?
I think that's basically it. I think at this point, once the survey's done, both parties will be sort of comfortable with what we're selling, what they're buying, and be able to proceed.
So by extension, since we're talking property at the city, the infield was the same issue on the survey on that as well and legal work for that. So how does that fit in with things? It's been some time since that court ruling was made pushing, allowing the infield property transfer to move forward, and I just don't have a sense that it is moving forward. I was just wondering what's the holdup on that?
A few different issues on that. Certainly, the legal process grounds along slower than anyone would like, including the court systems. So I think a little bit of a different issue on that, but where that is, is once we had a court decision on title, I think, believe the effective date was April 1st, in terms of notice to Mr. Gaskin and his company was, the study period will essentially reset the clock at that point. So he's got a year from April 1st to come back and say, you know, yea or nay, this is the way we're going with the project. So I'm not sure. I know he's been busy also on other projects, but that is sort of the timing. We are looking at from the city's perspective that we're waiting until, you know, late February, March of next year before we start sort of prodding and saying, hey, what's going on? Are you doing anything? And if not, you know, we're going to move in a different direction.
Thank you.
I have had several conversations with Mr. Gaskin and he has indicated he's looking at his options, trying to explore how he could potentially move forward on the project, but he's also said he's much busier with larger projects and just staffing a smaller project in this area of the state would be very difficult for him. So he's pursuing alternatives and very actively. That's all I can say at this point.
So our property is tied up until he decides that he's going to go ahead with what we thought was what he wanted to do in the first place?
That's correct. He has a period to review it and determine whether or not he wants to move forward, a due diligence period.
So with the clock ticking and we're looking at February, April, maybe, in there, then the prodding from us if nothing's happening? And hopefully, it'll be happening.
Well, that's the thing. I mean, it's ultimately up to him. He can choose to move forward or not. I mean, he's, we've got a deadline where he has to say, look, are you doing something or are you not? And, you know, there's a chance he says, I'm not, and then it's just city property again, you know, with no tie whatsoever. So there is always that option that he can basically walk away at this point, at any point.
Is it correct that basically this option was $5,000? Is that what was paid to the city from Echelon? Was it 5,000?
I believe so, but I wouldn't want to.
So he's got all this property tied up for 5,000? For the length of time?
To be fair, it was tied up because of the legal issues, not, you know, you can't blame that on Mr. Gaskin.
He's just taking advantage of 5,000.
No, no, I don't, well, I mean, I don't believe he's taking advantage of it. And remember, the reason why we were excited about Mr. Gaskin is he was going to save the water tower. There's not a lot of people knocking on our doors to save that piece of property. I highly suspect we would have done nothing with that property for this time period. So, you know, if another developer's interested, when does his option expire?
I believe there's a six-month extension study period, potentially, but the actual deadline would be April 1st, 2022, extendable at his discretion for another six months.
Okay, okay. I mean, if April of 2022 rolls around and he doesn't want to do it, it's not like we have another developer lined up to save that water tower. So, you know.
But I would submit, if there was someone standing in the queue or who's going to read about this in our local periodicals that has an interest, they could work through the city manager to reach Mr. Gaskins and look at purchasing the right to do so. So it's not, he's not tying it up and he's not being belligerent or dragging it out for any.
No, I'm not suggesting that he is.
Okay. It sounded like you were.
No, not at all. I'm just saying, you know, it's a pretty low amount of money to corner a piece of property.
Right.
For an extended amount of time. That's what I'm saying.
Sure.
That, of course, no one knew was available, they say, until Mr. Gaskin expressed interest in that property. So, you know, there's been two pieces of property within the city that council has taken an active interest in after not taking a very strong active interest in for literally decades, the Spotswood property and the water tower property because Mr. Gaskin showed interest in them.
Right, so we should thank Mr. Gaskins for putting this on the table.
So what happens is we've got a piece of property where the water tower is that's assessed at $400,000 that the city has been sitting on and mowing and maintaining for decades. His light interest in it, which no one could have known COVID was going to occur and so on, his interest in it forced us to clear the title, realize that there's housing sites on the road that could be developed, that we own. So even if nothing happens with the water tower, you could have three or four homes there that could, again, provide long-term revenue to the city and water customers and so on. So, yeah, it's taken a long time. You are right about that, but it's certainly been not because of the city or not because Mr. Gaskin, to be quite honest.
Yeah, I think to, correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, but what he received was an option on the property for one year, if you include that six-month optional, for $5,000. And, you know, we're tolling all the time the legal issues because that was on us, not him. So it's really just that year is what he bought with his $5,000 option, just to be clear.
Exactly. I think from his perspective, he's getting the same deal he always had. It just started later than he expected because of the legal proceedings. So, and to David's point on that is regardless of who, if anyone was going to come to buy it, that issue would have had to be litigated in the same manner. So to the extent we now have that behind us, that's certainly a net win, certainly on the substance, but also going forward that that is now clear and not an issue, I think it's going to be much more attractive to anyone coming in, knowing that that's to anyone coming in, knowing that that's been settled as of 2021.
And one thing I'd point out to council, we don't know exactly what Mr. Gaskin's going to do, but if he should decide to walk away from this arrangement, you may recall the council members that were here at the time, or anyone who was in the audience and following, the attractive piece of Mr. Gaskin's offer was saving and utilizing the water tower in a positive fashion. So, you need to be thinking about, if he walks away from this deal, are we still committed to the water tower being saved and what have you? Not really to discuss tonight, but I just plant that seed, as we look to the future, if Mr. Gaskins does happen to walk away from this deal.
And one other thing I want to add to that, if the water tower is not saved, and there's a developer who comes forward with a plan to do something else with that property, there are significant costs involved in taking down that water tower. So, you know, that would affect what we could sell that property for. So...
Lots of variables change, but we've got the deal, and waiting for him to finish his due diligence, which we agreed to, for $5,000. Look forward to future updates on Spotswood in particular. Next item is boards and commissions. Mr. Smith, Blue Ridge Resource Authority.
Blue Ridge Resource Authority met Monday. As you saw in the city manager's report, we are losing our executive director at the end of the month. Advertisements have been placed to, for his position and replacement. Authority board member will vet those and present those applications to the rest of the board. Year-end fiscal, we're looking at about a $60-plus thousand shortfall, due primarily to Leachate, while the rest of the region seems to be running at a 25-inch deficit in rain versus last year. The landfill seems to have been hit heavily with some isolated storms. So, a $50,000 overage in Leachate was definitely not foreseen, otherwise, we would have budgeted for it. But that's the primary cause of the cost overrun for fiscal '21. Cell 2 construction has begun. DEQ has more or less signed off on the old cell, so that can be put on the shelf and maintained as prescribed. Cell 2 construction should finish up, hopefully, by the end of the year. That's about when cell 1 will fill up, as projected. So, I'll keep you posted on that. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Hearing no questions. Main Street Lexington.
No report.
Yikes. Do we, do you have, we had a successful restaurant week, I trust, and do we have an upcoming sidewalk sale?
Yes. Okay, I do have a report. Restaurant week went very well, and even just stores participated. It's expanding. And then sidewalk sale is the first weekend in September.
Terrific. Thank you. Great report. Planning Commission.
I tried again. No report.
Terrific. Love the summertime blues. Regional Tourism. Okay, I have a report. The Tourism Board will meet again on August 18th, but at our July 21st meeting, we said goodbye to our former chair, Jerry Price, who sold his house last month and is moving back to Oregon with his wife, Deb, this week. Jerry spent over two weeks on the Tourism Board, and the last year as chair, and we are going to miss his input and guidance. A few regional announcements. First, there's a new winery in Rockbridge. Fairfield's Echo Adesso Vineyards had its grand opening on July 31st. Echo Adesso means here now in Italian, and this new vineyard offers lodging, hiking, and of course, local wine. They are dog-friendly, family-friendly, and picnic-friendly, and are open Thursdays through Sundays at 11:00 to 5:00. And you can check out more about them and directions on their website, echoadesso.com. The Rockbridge Regional Fair is going to be in Glasgow this year, August 26th, 27th, and 28th. There'll be live music, carnival rides, and food vendors. But that same weekend, on August 28th, from 9:00 to 3:00, the Rockbridge Community Festival will take place on Main Street in downtown Lexington. And that is put on by the local J.C.'s and the Lexington Rotary Club, and all funds benefit Rockbridge-area charities. And speaking of the J.C.'s, tomorrow, as part of their Friday's Alive Concert Series, the Soul Expressions Band will be performing in Lexington's Davidson Park. This group covers everything from Motown and classic rock and roll, to top favorite hits from the 80s, 90s, and 2000s. And this will be the last event for this summer's Friday's Alive Concert Series. It's free admission, and the music kicks off at 5:30 tomorrow. Finally, you may have noticed some very loud and imposing HVAC equipment in the Lexington Visitor Center parking lot, quite close to the entrance. This has been a source of frustration, both to the visitor center and to neighboring residents. The issue is that the HVAC on the second floor, that CenturyLink uses to cool their server equipment, died. And so, they've had to put this external system up there to protect that equipment while they're waiting for parts for the HVAC system. And as Jim mentioned in his report, apparently, they're hard to come by. So, they were given a 12-week back order estimate. Six weeks have passed, so it looks like that outdoor equipment will be there at least through August. Just a heads up. That's it. Any questions?
Lots of exciting things going on in the area. Thank you very, very much. And I'm sure you expressed our appreciation to Jerry and Deb for their dedication and service to the Tourism Board. Rockbridge-area Recreation Organization.
I will add one thing to Leslie's report, though. This coming weekend is the sales tax holiday in the state, and even though all of us up here like to collect sales tax, but our residents should feel free to shop downtown. A lot of our stores downtown carry the clothing or school supplies. And of course, it's other, I guess, hurricane-preparedness items and so on. But, you know, pick up a pair of shoes or some clothing downtown at Walkabout or Lex Running Shop. I'll just put a plug in for that. The RARO Board of Directors has met numerous times in the last few weeks, as we have conducted a couple rounds of interviews, and we had a very successful search for an executive director. And late Tuesday night, we hired Mr. Chad Coffey to be our executive director. And so, Mr. Coffey has served as a teacher, a P.E. teacher, for about 18 years in Buffalo Gap, and also, I guess it's James River, I believe, Riverheads, I'm sorry, Riverheads. Over the course of his career, he's also coached just about every sport and showed a great success. He's coached girls' basketball, boys' basketball, softball, baseball. He's won Coach of the Year awards in a lot of those sports. And we are ecstatic to bring him on as the executive director here for RARO. The last year, we have been ably served, the whole community has, by Darrell Plogger. It's been a tough year during the pandemic. And so, Darrell turning the reins over, giving up the interim executive director position to Mr. Coffey now, it's going to be great for the community, great for the kids. And our charge to Mr. Coffey is, quite honestly, to increase participation. You know, let's start with increasing participation, and it's going to take off from there. Get more kids playing sports, all of our offerings, that's our goal, and I have every belief that Mr. Coffey will be successful. Throughout the process, I do want to acknowledge Joey Jones is our chairman of the board. He did a lot of heavy lifting. He did a great job helping to keep us on task, because our board is nine-strong, and we can get off task at times. And then also, Robbie Bailey, the city's H.R. Director, provided a lot of important guidance, since none of us are H.R. professionals. So, I'm super excited about Mr. Coffey's hiring. But of course, nothing, you know, there's no time to get acclimated, because we immediately are starting our fall sports, of football, soccer, and cheerleading, this fall. And you might remember in years past, our senior football players, which is 11, 12, and 13-year-olds, they traveled to the Allegheny Youth Football League, which really meant that we played those teams, and they also came here. But this year, again, because of numbers, numbers are just declining a little bit with football. It looks like our juniors will also participate in that league, so that we have enough teams that we're not just playing each other. So, that includes the 9- and 10-year-olds. And we were, you know, initially reluctant to ask those families to travel some, but after it went well with the senior league, and they enjoy traveling, we think that the 9- and 10-year-olds will also hopefully enjoy traveling. But it also comes down to numbers, because we don't have the numbers to just play each other over and over and over. So, between Darrell Plogger, Brian Smith, Bev McGee, and Mr. Coffey, I'm excited about the fall and just carrying forward into basketball and so on. So, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything for Mr. Ziegler?
If I read the press release accurately, he participated in RARO Sports himself. So, it's neat to see it come full circle. It's been around that long, from the origins with Doug Chase, and neat to have one of our own leading the charge. Congratulations on that selection. Next item on the agenda is Threshold. Ms. Alexander.
Yes, Threshold met on July 20th, and one of the first items to discuss had to do with suggesting to try to have a Wednesday meeting day to accommodate those who had a conflict with Tuesday afternoons. The planning department was checking on whether there were any conflicts with the bylaws, and would get back to us to survey future meeting dates. Now, subsequent to that meeting, it was determined that the fourth Wednesday at 4:00 p.m. each month will be set as our meeting day and time. And the next meeting will be Wednesday, August 25th, and the September meeting is scheduled for September 22nd. Then nominations were made for new officers this year, and Fred Kerschner will serve as his last term because of the bylaws as chair, and Crystal Vozzo will continue serving as vice chair. Charles Familliner, the HUD, former HUD director at the Richmond Field Office, has agreed to work with Threshold and the Planning Commission to develop a presentation on affordable housing, once the spectrum of the type of affordable housing is narrowed. So, we're waiting to speak with Planning Commission about that. The board members have contacted potential members, new members of the board, and will continue to do so. Some who have been approached have indicated they're not available. Others are still in the mode of considering applying. So, that's a wait-and-see. Then, there was some discussion about a possible housing component of the Ready Grant that you've heard about, the prospects of a housing survey developing, possibly developing from those discussions. And so, Threshold wanted to kind of make themselves available to provide information to that group from their experiences in the housing industry. And it was stressed that, since this is the housing board for the city, we should try, at some point, to try to join conversations, no matter who it is, about housing in the community when those subjects come up, so that we can share our previous surveys and stress the importance of surveys being done by professional consulting firms, especially when the government is funding a project. The planning department was going to inquire more about the Ready Grant in regard to housing. Then, that led to more discussion about the future of Threshold, and its rich history as a key change-maker in the community, and how we can revive that energy. And there are more discussions to come on that topic.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Good work going on at Threshold. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Alexander? Ms. Strong?
Just one, Marilyn. Is Threshold, is that board fully filled now?
We still, we have three vacancies now. There was one that came up at the last minute, so now there are three. And we've got some feelers out there, and we're just waiting to hear back. They just didn't respond to our request by this meeting, so that we could decide on some of those people. So, they're coming, I think, I hope.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else for Ms. Alexander?
So, if there are three missing, do you have a quorum?
I believe we do. We did the last, yeah, we do.
I'm not aware of the specific bylaws, but typically, if there's an open seat, that's not considered as part of determining a quorum. If you've got four out of seven seats, it's four people. So, you need a majority of the four, not a majority of the seven.
Thank you, sir. We're Service Authority. Mr. Alligood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The MSA, Mari Service Authority, met, board met at the end of July, and it was on the 27th of July, and that's their regular meeting. And that was my first meeting to officially participate. And there were several matters of importance to the city that were discussed at this particular meeting, one of which was the disbursement of discussion about the disbursement of infiltration and infusion funds. Often, you hear that referred to as I&amp;I in the business of things and whatnot. And the MSA Board agreed that the $256,000 was available for use by the city and the county. It's roughly 50/50 is the way it is. But to receive any money from the MSA, and this I&amp;I money is to use to repair lines, to reduce the leakages that we've actually paid for when it goes to the treatment plant and whatnot. And so, this procedure that was set in place is that the city and the county separately would send a letter detailing costs and projects that they intend to spend the money. And then, the board, MSA Board, would then take a look and then possibly approve those funds from that $250,000 fund at a rate of 75%. So, it wouldn't be a one-to-one match. It's a little less. And in the grand scheme of things, you know, we in the city have approved nearly a million dollars at this point for I&amp;I. And so, I was mentioning this to the city manager and whatnot, and there was a little bit of discussion, should we apply for it? And I think we should, but that remains to be seen and whatnot. But it's available, and so, we're looking at maybe $125,000, possible new money coming to the city. It's very likely we'd turn around and give it back to them, but it's available and whatnot. Additionally, they've been, MSA organization's been having trouble hauling the sludge. They're, all their vehicles are broken. And they've been hiring a contractor to distribute the funds and paying such a rate that it incentivizes the MSA purchasing their own truck and distributing things. And so, the board suggested to the executive director, Jordan Combs, to pursue getting bids for the purchase of a truck to do the spreading. Additionally, there apparently is concern over the switching system for the emergency generator, which is the only generator that keeps that plant running, should there be an upset in power availability from the power company. And there have been issues with that, and the projected cost, everything's subject to change, at this time, to repair it, is in a neighborhood of $100,000. And so, you know, one more thing, that money could go right back if you looked at it that way. But it would be split between the city. Additionally, there's a, there was a new item. Apparently, the McTheney Trail, there has been some back-and-forth between the McTheney's and MSA about, and maybe perhaps even the city, about, McTheney's concerned about having clean water at the beach, the Rockbridge Beach. And he's, he met today, I was not at the meeting, was not invited to the meeting, but I'll hear the report of the meeting, and may have a report back next time, to iron out what the details need to be to satisfy his desire to have clean water at the beach. He's concerned that there might be an upset that would be of concern to people swimming in the river at the time. The last thing that happened was, there is a facility... The last thing that happened was there is a facilities report that's been in the makings for, I've been referring to it several times here. There's facilities report that is supposed to be reviewed by the Board, the first meeting. There will be several meetings by the MSA Board that will start detailing the repairs that need to occur to modernize the MSA wastewater plant as well as the water treatment plant. And I have heard and don't know, it's all speculation, I'll know more when the meeting occurs, that we're talking tens of millions of dollars to fix this issue and whatnot. And so the MSA is, that's going to be a very large project, and we need to go over that. And so the MSA Board will have its first meeting to start reviewing that. The currently, the, let's see, the generator and the replacement, all right, McTheney said that, and then the MSA plants. And so the meeting date for beginning the review, it's open to the public, will occur at the Rockbridge County Administration Building at 5:00 on August 17th. And you're welcome to come and hear what's going to happen with that. That's the end of report.
Thank you, Mr. Alligood. Any questions? Ms. Strong?
Is there any data to suggest that there's any issue with the outfall from the treatment plant?
Good question. There is none, and the concern is possibly anticipating that it may happen. And my understanding is Mr. McTheney merely wants to be notified should it ever occur. But there isn't any gripe about poor water quality, and MSA has, to my understanding, met all state water quality standards up till now.
The generator replacement, is that the water treatment plant or the wastewater treatment plant?
It's at the, it's at the, I believe it's the wastewater treatment plant, but I'm not sure, in there. And it's not the replacement of the generator, it's replacement of the control system that activates the generator. And apparently it's been cobbled together over the years, and the cobbling has created problems that according to the executive director need to be resolved sooner than later. And so there's a project that hasn't been specified yet, but it's beginning the discussion of it to do that.
Is that the control system that's housed in the pump house?
I think so. Well, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Alligood? Thank you for that report, and thank you for service on the MSA. Under my report, just wanted to make you aware of a meeting that I had the opportunity to attend today was hosted by Senator Mark Warner. It was for the PDC, Planning District Commissions throughout the state, and it was highlighting and giving some very timely information about the proposed infrastructure bill. And city manager will touch more on it, but it was a great meeting, and having been on the school board when Senator Warner was governor, he is not lacking any enthusiasm for Virginia and for the work that he's doing. So need to be involved with that and get some of the up-to-date information. He's very optimistic that that will in fact get passed, and there'll be significant dollars coming to the Commonwealth and our community as well, which we look forward to. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd first like to take just a minute. I think some of you met her on the way in, but our new interim finance director, Ms. Jennifer Bell, is with us here this evening. She's been with us in the offices several days over the last number of weeks, getting to know her job, becoming familiar with our staff and what we do here and all of our finances. And she's been assisted by Jake Adams, who still is in and out a few times a week to provide her with guidance and some more support and assistance. She's catching on real quick. I've heard a lot of good things about her from other staffs, and so I'm pleased to have her with us. I've mentioned a number of times in these meetings that the gas company is working here in Lexington, if you haven't noticed, and they're still here working in Lexington. And they're still on Washington Street, Lewis Street, Still Street, and now they're on New Market Street, or New Marketplace. They're going to eventually get onto Nelson Street, East Nelson Street, and go all the way up to Walker. So they're going to be with us for a while. Originally, several weeks ago, we met with the folks in charge of the project, Jeff Martone and I, and they thought maybe they'd be out of here the end of August. I haven't heard that change, but if I was betting my money, I think they're going to be around a bit longer. Primarily, the reason they're slowed down now is they keep running into leaks in their pipes, and when they have a leak, they have to immediately fix it, of course, and we're very glad they do. But they're sort of in the same ballgame we're in. You start leak, working at one end of the pipe, and then you get a leak 200 yards down the road because you flexed that little old iron pipe a little bit, and it just has enough there to crack. So they can't predict when it'll happen, but when they do, they react, and it does slow down the work, of course. So they're with us for a while. We all know that we've been looking forward to the financing, the closing of the utility bonds for the Diamond Hill Water and Sewer Project, and that sale did close this Wednesday, yesterday, at 1.86 percent interest, and that's the all-true interest rate, which is excellent money to borrow at today, 1.86 percent. I just sort of rolled it off my tongue the wrong way, but that's what it is. So that's good news. I think Mr. Ayers mentioned the backlog in parts, and yes, we do experience that on a regular basis, and some of the areas are small and some are large. Just a couple of small examples, we've been waiting for the fire suppression equipment for the hood range in the Piovano Building, and we're being told we're just going to keep waiting longer. We've also been waiting for some parts for air circulation and HVAC in the Miller's House Museum, and those also are not available. So we've been in touch with those organizations, and both RARO and the Miller's House Foundation is very understanding. It's not like people haven't heard of these shortages. They're frustrating, but we'll move and get those things taken care of as soon as we get the parts in, and those organizations know that. Bridge repair funding. The mayor mentioned infrastructure funding. Some of that funding might at some point in time encompass bridges, but we're going to have to wait for that. We're also waiting for money from VDOT. We did recently learn that the West Nelson Street Bridge does qualify now for VDOT funding, but we've had bridges on that list for years. In fact, one of them that has been approved, has been approved, the West, the Lime Kiln Bridge has been approved for years, and we still haven't seen funding. So just because we're on the list doesn't mean that we're going to see funding anytime soon, unfortunately. Now, with one caveat, if there's enough of that infrastructure money that goes to VDOT, maybe some of it will come to us, but that's unknown at this point. Nonetheless, having it on the list, that is, the Nelson Street Bridge on the list, is a good thing. Few updates from the Fire Department. Of course, the Fire Department is big on training, and they had three career and two volunteer members participate in the Fire Department Instructors Conference recently. It's the largest of its kind in the country, so they also become, can become training instructors, not only for our department, for other surrounding departments as well. We have a new EMS reporting software that is live. It's a state system, and it's very comprehensive as to how it will work with the department in recording their data and managing their data and software needs in the department. And that was managed by Lieutenant Clemmer as they installed that and went through that process. Also, three members of the department completed three weeks of fire inspector training, and of course, they added those skills to their own skill set and also to our skill set in the department, just having that additional resource available to us. In the Police Department, Chief Green continues to meet with the agencies that are important to partner with, with the Police Department. She recently met with Kim Shaw, who's the director of the local community services board. And of course, we all see in the news today and understand that a lot of the interactions the police have with people sometimes stem from mental or emotional illnesses. So having that relationship and good working relationship with the Community Service Board is really vital today to make sure that the individuals who need help can get help not only from the Police Department, but also from mental health professionals when some incident may occur. So she's had some good conversations there just to develop that relationship and get to know the parties. She's getting to know Ms. Shaw, Ms. Shaw's getting to know her, and just move forward and make sure that we have an understanding that really serves our community well. Again, training in the Police Department is critical. We've had a number of issues recently that encompass training, crisis management at school for the school-based incidents. If there are issues in the schools, the police have to know how to handle those in a very unique fashion. We've had some training on that recently. Also, the Department of Criminal Justice certification biased policing, making sure that we don't bias in what we do or the department does not. Some training there through the Criminal Justice Department. The ALIS program was also recertified, and we also sent some folks to assist in training, and Detective Smith recently did that with the Cardinal Criminal Justice Academy for new trainees in law enforcement. Our foot patrol efforts continue to expand, and more recently, we were patrolling in the evening downtown, and one of the officers saw a door open to a business, called the business owner. Of course, it wasn't supposed to be open. They checked it out, nothing was removed, nothing was problematic there, and the owner, of course, was quite pleased that there was somebody out looking at businesses on the street all hours of the day and the night. This particular week, that is, the last week of July, we had 32 hours of foot patrol in the community, and the chief is committed, and the department is committed, to keep foot patrol active and increase that amount so that the officers and the public are in very close contact, and we see things or they see things from the very intimate view of the sidewalks and the street of our community as opposed to at 30 miles an hour in a police Our newest hire, Officer Lewis, has started phase two of his field training, which is a good thing, and with another six weeks of training, he'll be able to be out and patrol on his own, which is an excellent thing to happen because we also found today that one of our detectives, Rob Smith, has resigned. He's taken a position with the Buena Vista Police Department, and we do hate to see him leave, of course, but wish him luck as he moves to his new phase of his law enforcement career. But it does show that we need to keep hiring people in the Police Department. We're now down two positions with his absence. I would add that I've asked Robbie Bailey, our HR director, to look at our vacancies in the city alone in the last year, and it's somewhere between 30 and 32 turnovers in the last year. So you will be hearing more from staff, Robbie Bailey and myself, about retention and recruitment of employees across the city. I saw in the paper today that the city of Lexington is offering a $5,000 signing bonus for new, for certified police officers and $50,000 a year starting salary. City, no, I'm sorry, city of Lynchburg. My apologies, Lynchburg. So we may not have to compete with our neighbors, Buena Vista, Rockbridge County, or Stanton or Waynesboro, but Lynchburg, for that kind of money, could easily hire officers away from us, and that's going to continue to happen. We have a great workplace, but nonetheless, there's competition out there that we have to consider as we're trying to recruit and retain good employees across the board. And again, speaking of vacancies and new hires, we did hire recently, the Electoral Board, a new registrar, that's Ms. Jackie Harris, and she comes with a significant amount of experience in that field. The Board was very pleased to have her apply and accept the position for us or with us here. Mr. Coffey is our new director at RARO. Mr. Ziegler mentioned him. We also heard about the Blue Ridge Resource Authority and that vacancy. I did want to note that the finance director position is open and resumes are being accepted. I think we've had a few already placed, which is a good thing. We're also hiring for the assistant finance director position. Had a couple of interviews this week, and as I noted, Detective Rob Smith has resigned from the PD. Little update in the Planning Department, the Architectural Review Board met twice in July and approved seven certificates of appropriateness. The Planning Commission itself and the staff had 108 inspections and related enforcement actions in the month of July, and the value of all permits, the improvement, that is, was calculated to be $163,852. So we've got a lot of activity going on, most of it's positive. Despite this turnover in staff, staff performs well, and we just want to assure ourselves that that very important resource that we have here in our community, our great staff, can be maintained, and we can continue to serve the community as well as we have. And that's my report. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the city manager? Chuck?
The turnover study that you mentioned, or the informal turnover study, does that include the school system?
No, it does not.
When you're compiling that report, if it's not too much trouble for staff, if you can include that?
We plan on sharing that with you in detail. I just asked Robbie to put that together today based on what we've been seeing in the last several months. And again, he, I saw it briefly at the end of the day, he had put together the names, the departments of every individual who's left the city and then we had to replace. So I can have that to you at any time.
Great, thank you.
Plan on going over it in detail.
Any other questions for the city manager? Thank you, Jim. City Attorney, Mr. Jenkins?
Just briefly, wanted to update council on the depositions that took place last Monday, July 6th, with five former, well, three current, five total members at the time of the Lexington Fire Department. They all did an excellent job. They weren't, parties were not parties. They were witnesses to, it's a malpractice suit up in Augusta County between parents of a child and the hospital and some of the physicians, but the firefighters and T's responded to a 911 call. And so that's why they were sort of involved in the case, just what did you guys do? There was never any question or any concern that they did anything wrong or anything other than their absolute best, and that was clear in their depositions. And just a very specific and visceral reminder of what a difficult job that those folks have, both from a physical training mentality, but also from the emotional perspective as well as what they do every day. And that just really gives, brought into focus that the city, city council, citizens of the city should be extremely proud of what the Lexington Fire Department does and very happy that those are the folks who are going to show up when you call 911. So that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Don't see any questions. Next item is new business, first item, opioid abatement fund memorandum of understanding. Mr. Jenkins?
So I'll just take the lead. This is really the culmination of the past few updates on where the opioid crisis is currently leading. This, what you're, we're asking you to vote on tonight is a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the opioid abatement fund created by the state and an agreement with the Attorney General's Office on how the funds that are being received as part of these nationwide settlements are going into the bucket, how those funds are going to be allocated once they're in the bucket. So this has been the process of months, years-long negotiations between various parties at the national and state level, and then within the Commonwealth, the various municipalities and the AG's office to determine the best way to sort of weight these funds and get them to the communities, or get them to communities and response and balance with the actual cost of the epidemic to those municipalities. So if there's any specific questions, I don't want to rehash what we've talked about before, but this is our recommendation. I think it's highly unlikely that the city standing alone will come to any better recovery than it will get through this mechanism. So we, we're certainly, and our outside council is certainly strongly recommending that council approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, and all of you received a copy of the memorandum of understanding. And if there aren't any questions, we'd welcome council's consideration.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing and approving the Virginia Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding.
No second.
Have a motion of second. Was there something in there about designating the city manager to sign on our behalf? Do I remember correctly, Mr. Jenkins, or?
I think approving the resolution is all we need.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and look forward to the work of the organizations that'll be carrying out those tasks of improving processes and treatments in our community. Next item is 15.2, Project Horizon's request for a parade. And Mr. Ziegler, your- And Mr. Ziegler, your question was whether or not Project Horizon and the city staff were aware of Washington Lee's homecoming, or?
Well, I'm sure they were, because it's not enough, you know, there's no bigger weekend. But I just wanted to be sure that Main Street Lexington, again, I, fully will make a motion and pass this tonight. We said we can support it, obviously. But I always feel like it's, it's good to see that Main Street Lexington was aware. It gives us the ability to be able to say that MSL is kind of a liaison to the, to the businesses downtown that relies so heavily on Parents Weekend. So, that's, that's only my, my only question.
Yeah. My understanding is Rebecca Logan is on the committee that reviews these requests. So, the executive director of Main Street Lexington was involved in the decision-making.
Good enough for me. I just always would like to know that, so that when we hear about it later from business owners, a street, Main Street closed for whether it be 10 minutes or, or 20 minutes, it does, it does have an impact and cause people to drive the wrong way on our one-way streets. So, certainly. But I'll make a motion to approve the road closure for the parade on October 2nd, as presented.
Second.
Have a motion of second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just note, I did have similar concern as Mr. Ziegler, and did look, at least both schools or football games are away that weekend, and there are some other sports going on. Yeah, I think they're at Hampton Sydney. It's at a what, at Hampton Sydney, but anyway. But, but that is also something to keep in mind as we talk about our events policy, because when we talked about last time, we did talk about not having it, any events, street closures in the middle of the day for this reason.
Right. We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? If not a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. And lastly, 15 dot 3 under new business, Washington Lee's street closure. Ms. Alligood?
The reason I mentioned that was that when I saw the list of all the dates that WNL had submitted to the city for closing the streets, I'm looking at all those dates, and several, there were two groups of, one group is like four days in a row, it looked like, in there to do that. I was just wondering what effect that has on Main Street Lexington business and whatnot. I know we want to cooperate with, with WNL, you know, the students are coming back, people have to unload cars, and students moving in, students moving out, and whatnot. And it just seems to me, looking at that list, that there are a lot of days in there. And I was just wondering if there's an effect that I'm not seeing that we need to talk about.
Keep in mind, when Washington Lee makes a request for the street closure, it's the portion of Washington Street from Lee to Nelson which runs through their campus. So, it has arguably no impact on Main Street, Jefferson, Nelson, et cetera. If anything, diverts people on Lee and back around to Nelson. So, it, instead of bypassing on Washington Street all the way, they would have to go through downtown Lexington would be the only, so it may encourage more traffic for downtown.
Right. And I'm just thinking, down the road, you know, we've discussed in the past the idea of creep from Washington Lee and whatnot, you know, when they use things more and more and more, you know, it kind of becomes de facto their own kind of use and expectations. And I'm just putting that on the table.
Certainly.
To talk about that.
It's, I appreciate the fact and share the concern and energy for institutional creep as a use for our two factories, VMI and Washington Lee, expanding more and more into our two and a half square miles. This certainly is, for safety reasons, for the loading and unloading, so we don't have tractor trailers rolling through while parents and students are trying to unload their, their wares. But very, very valid point, and I share your concern.
Yes, certainly, those of us that have taken children to college appreciate the need to have a good unloading place and loading in there. When we took ours, we had 20 minutes.
Indeed. And Washington Lee's got it down to a science now where they invite upperclassmen to come and help unload. So, as a parent, you just stand out of the way. It's, it's a, it's a nice process and very festive. Much, or not, I know your experience on 20-minute rundown was not as, not as enjoyable, perhaps, run up and down the steps.
Right. They wrote down license numbers.
Yeah. Keep moving. Very good. I ask for council's consideration on this list of closures, street closures.
Make a motion that we approve the Washington Lee request for street closures as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Ziegler, second by Ms. Alexander with the tie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We don't have a closed meeting scheduled, and will alert council that we have typically twice-a-year planned meetings in April and October with our school board. And currently, the school board meeting is scheduled for the first meeting in October, which I believe is October 7th. So, mark your calendars for a work session, or joint meeting rather, with the Lexington City School Board. Is there anything else to come before council this evening? Hearing none, I will declare us adjourned, and thank you all very much, and enjoy the beautiful evening.